The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman French, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman French, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Cruzen. Twenty-one present.
Quarren being present, unless everyone in the chambers and galleries is able to stand, please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We will suspend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar, and take a second on that motion, second about Alderman from the 22nd, Alderman from the 19th, would you like to approach the dais?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I would like to ask License Collector Mavis Thompson, Thomas, to come up, please, and I'd like to ask our former license collector, current president and CEO of the Urban League of Metropolitan St. Louis, to come up to the podium. It gives me great honor this morning to stand here and recognize a gentleman that I've known for quite a while. You see, most of us talk about a lot of things and we want to put a lot of words on documents, we want to legalize processes and operations, but at the end of the day, how we make our communities whole and healthy and get everybody understanding what is needed, and most especially to get the buy-in, means that you must be upfront and a full participant. So Columbus Edwards is one of those guys. Mr. Edwards today is standing here 90 years old. And before I officially read the resolution that I'd like to present to him, let me share one other little tidbit with you. Mr. Columbus Edwards is also the oldest working city employee. And for those youngsters who are listening and for those who have active, you know, personal lives that you think everything is more important than work, he doesn't call it a stick all the time. He comes to work and he's always prepared and he's always alert. But Mr. Edwards today, we'd like to honor you for all your accomplishments, for being one of those citizens that we love to have, who always is there to help make a difference. So as I read this resolution and reflect on your past, I hope that you can understand how much we appreciate you and we really, really thank you for all that you have done. So on this day, whereas the Honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis has been apprised that on September 9th, Columbus Edwards celebrated his 90th birthday. Columbus served in the Army from 1943 to 1946 and fought in World War II, and Columbus received a medal for sharpshooting. He had a few nicknames and was sometimes called "The Poet" because he used to recite poetry and sometimes called "The Croner" because he loved to sing. And he is a homeowner in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood, let me add that part to this, and has lived in the same house in the City of St. Louis since 1946. Columbus married Alexine Edwards in 1955 and was married to her until 2012 when she passed away. And to that union, they had a daughter, Joan Heron, and one grandchild, Veronica. And Columbus retired from Monsanto after working there for 16 years, and he traveled the world for the next 12 years. Columbus started a nonprofit called The Whole New Area in 1992 to help improve the community. And Columbus was active in the community and local politics in 1992 and served as committee man for the 19th ward for 15 years. He has been a member of True Light Church for the last 10 years and he has worked for the License Collector's office for eight years and counting and is the oldest employee working in any office of the St. Louis City Government. His hobbies include building computers, playing guitar and violin, of which he still plays, painting portraits of people as a gift to them without them knowing he was doing it, and working as an amazing tailor constructing his own suits as well as others. I wanted to share with you also one other thing. Mr. Edwards was one of the most endearing people that I met when I moved into the 19th ward. I didn't want to miss the neighborhood meetings because he went out of his way to make sure that we had information and resources and people, decision-making people present so that we could hold them accountable. So now, as we move forward, we now therefore be of resolve by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we happily pause in our deliberations to recognize and congratulate you, Mr. Edwards, on your 90th birthday as well as honor you as the oldest employee for many years of service to the City of St. Louis. And as you know, we direct this to be spread across the copies of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen today and we have prepared this commemorative copy of this resolution for you. And so I'm going to stick back and make sure that your two employers are right here with you as we present this to you, okay? Now I think you have a couple other things, sir?
Uh, yes. We also have the Board of Aldermen medal that we would like to present to you, Mr. Edwards, and congratulations for all those years. I think about what, you think about all, you know, all the things that he's lived through and been through across all these years, I'll tell you what, I am indeed honored to share this dais with you today. But before we let you talk, we need to hear from your two employers and also from other members of the Board of Aldermen.
Good morning. I am going to reserve some of my time for Michael McMillan, who actually was employed, Mr. E., when he first came to the License Collector's office. I want to say that Mr. Edwards, and we call him Mr. E., Mr. E. is the quintessential employee. He never misses a day at work. We have to force him to actually take vacation days, which he probably has more vacation days than any of us have ever worked with vacation. He's always there on time. Matter of fact, most mornings he comes and opens up the office for us. Mr. Edwards is basically assigned to the cigarette tax and, you know, each cigarette package has to have a tax on it and that's a stamp that he put on. And so we lead that responsibility for Mr. Edwards. He is also very instrumental in the office with making sure that we all play as a team. He's a definite team player. He keeps morale up and going and, Mr. E., we're very proud of you and we hope that you have many more years of service left in you. Thank you, sir, for everything that you have done.
Good morning. It is always a pleasure to be among my former colleagues and I too want to commend Mr. Edwards for his dedication, his service, his loyalty to this city. You couldn't ask for a finer gentleman who works hard, wants to make a difference in his community, gives back and helps others with every single thing that he has. So, Mr. Edwards, we appreciate you, we love you and we wish you a happy 90th birthday. Congratulations.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 5th?
Thank you, members of the Board and Mr. President. I would just like to take this time to salute Mr. Columbus. I remember as a rookie city employee, he would come up to the city earnings tax and he would just always have such a vibrant personality and when I first saw him, I was like, who is this, this older gentleman that's just always here and he's always diligent about his work? And someone had to tell me, hey, that's Columbus. And so I just want to salute you for your years of service. I hope I have your same energy at 90 years old and I'm totally disheartened that I didn't get a chance to partake in that birthday cake that you had. It was a total depiction of you and once again, I'd just like to salute you for your service. Thank you.
Alderman from the 4th?
Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Edwards, I also want to stand up and to congratulate you and salute you and, you know, I've been in admiration of you from afar for a lot of years and the good thing about getting to be 90 is that you get to train a lot of people. You've helped a lot of people that don't even know that you've helped them and I know that that's what people do who are in service. But I also want to tell you, you're just a baby. My neighbor who is, came to take care of her next, her uncle who lived to be 102 is now 97. Every day she gets up and when I leave that house, she tells me to take care of myself and don't you drive too fast and make sure you're doing it. So I don't know if you're married or not, but if you're looking for somebody to meet, have I got the lady for you. And she's just a few years older than you at 97. And congratulations.
Alderman from the 14th?
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to salute Mr. E. He is living testimony to what AARP, you may not know, American Association of Retired People. You probably don't know those, Mr. Edwards, but anyway. They promote that, you know, vigor and vitality is best for people working, so my hat's off to you along with everybody else here at the Board. Congratulations.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Mr. E., I admire your being down here this long in City Hall and I was going to say, I hope that I have the heritage you have when I get 90, but mine's already gone. Congratulations.
Mr. E., I want to just, you know, join with other members of the Board and on behalf of other city residents that you've served so well and the businesses that you've served so well across the years in congratulating and thanking you for a job well done. To be 90 years old, still employed by the City of St. Louis and looking as good as you look is amazing, don't you think? Let's give him a round of applause for that. I don't know what you eat, I don't know your sleeping patterns, whatever it is, but if you can write all that down and share it with us, I need it because some of us are catching up with you. But congratulations on a job well done. As you know, that resolution that Alderman from the 19th presented you with is the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions on behalf of the residents of the City of St. Louis up until this point in time. So 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the City of St. Louis and the Renaissance of this city, they're going to read about Mr. E. and understand that we paused this day in our deliberations to recognize you for a job well done and congratulate you on your 90th birthday and they all understand that you committed enough to the city that that was done today. So congratulations on a job well done, continue to do what you're doing, Mr. E., you are an inspiration to all. Alderman from the 4th?
Mr. President, is it too late to embank that?
No, now it is. You want to make the motion to embank?
Sir, I'm making a motion.
Move about Alderman from the 9th, second about Alderman from the 1st, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please prepare another copy of that resolution embanked.
So noted.
That was a rare occurrence, you know that. Hundred percent all the Aldermen agreeing on something. So congratulations again, Mr. E. Do you want to say?
You know, someone asked me one time, why have you lived so long? I says, well, we as individuals are what we call a body is nothing but a very fine tuned machine. It has all the parts and if they all work in unison, you have a very fine operating machine. We are made of chemicals. We have good chemicals, we have bad chemicals. If we think positive, your good chemicals will work for you. If you think negative, your bad chemicals will work for you. So I stress on each and every one of you, try to think positive. You will have a pleasant, long life. All right, thank you.
Staff, if we're going to join to take?
You may have to go. I may get you. I'll give Mr. Edwards one more round of applause. It's been moved in the second that we adopt our courtesy resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Turn to our regular order of business, introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guest. Alderman from the 9th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have my honored guest today, again, Lynn and Nick Beauchamp.
Welcome. Alderman from the 5th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guests Keith Taylor and Jeff Hines from the Carpenter's District Council.
Alderman from the 15th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest Donnie Pennington from Neighborhood Stabilization, David Holmes from St. Louis City Labor Club and Mike Grady from Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 562.
Alderman from the 26th?
Members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Mrs. Stephanie Robinson from AMUWE and also Mr. James Bell, resident of 26th Ward. Thank you.
Alderman from 27th?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest, one of my former colleagues and one of the best political minds that I've ever met, former Senator Ritter-Daze.
Alderman from 14th?
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have as my guest Dennis Sanvoti from the Missouri National Guard, Anthony Lancia from AGC, Gary Otten from Painter's District Council Number Two and Demetrius Al Alfred from Firefighters Local 73 that reside in the beautiful 14th Ward.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like wraps up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. September 25th, 19, what year, '25. Calvin Coolidge was president when Mr. Edwards was born. Might also be noted, I looked up, 90 years ago, Henry Ford instituted the Eight Hour Five Day Work Week, which has benefited him greatly. But what we have today is National One Hit Wonder Day. It's where you celebrate all the bad music that made it to the top 40. And National One Hit Wonder Day is not the story of Joe Vaccaro's political career. Thank you.
I don't know. Any further introduction? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from the September 11th meeting.
Move about Alderman from the 17th, second about Alderman from the 26th, in discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials?
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes. I have from as honored the mayor, the following correspondents. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Missouri Botanical Gardens Sub-District. The appointment of Narita Hobson, who resides in the 28th Ward. The reappointment of James Yem, who resides in the 8th Ward. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 9th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Missouri Botanical Gardens Sub-District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we accept the mayor's appointment.
Move about Alderman from the 9th, entertain a second on that motion, second about Alderman from 11th, any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Sub-District Board for the Missouri History Museum. The reappointment of Thomas Grady, who resides in the 28th Ward. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 9th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Sub-District Board of Missouri History Museum.
It's a mouthful, Mr. President. I move that we accept the mayor's appointment.
Move about Alderman from the 9th, entertain a second on that motion, second about Alderman from 26th, any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Locust Central Business District. The appointment of Michael Beckerman, who resides in the 19th Ward. On behalf of the 14th Locust Central Business District, I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Locust Central Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I ask for adoption of this resolution.
Been moved by Alderman from the 6th, entertain a second on that motion, second about Alderman from the 16th, any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Central West and South Special for appointment to the Central West End South Special Business District. The appointment of James Philip Shipman, who resides in the Seventh Ward. The reappointment of Milton Pete Rothschild II, who resides in the Twenty-Eighth Ward. On behalf of the Central West End South Special Business District, I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Central West End South Special Business District.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for approval of the mayor's appointment.
Moved by Alman from the seventeenth, entertain a second. Seconded by Alman from the eleventh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District. The appointment of Chris Lantner, who resides in the Olive, in Oliveet. Uh, on behalf of the Central West End Business Community Improvement District, I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to, um, confirm the mayor's appointment to the CWE Community Improvement District.
Moved by Alman from the twenty-eighth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alman from the sixteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Cheshire Annex Community Improvement District. The reappointment of Robert O'Loughlin, who resides in St. Charles. The reappointment of Craig Cobbler, who resides in Florissant. On behalf of the Cheshire Annex Community Improvement District, I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Cheshire Annex Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Cheshire Community Improvement District.
Moved by Alman from the twenty-eighth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the, Alman from the sixth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Broadway Hotel Community Improvement District. The reappointment of Robert O'Loughlin, who resides in St. Charles. The reappointment of Craig Cobbler, who resides in Florissant. On behalf of the Broadway Hotel Community Improvement District, I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alman from the seventh, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Broadway Hotel Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to confirm, uh, the mayor's nominees, the Broadway Hotel CID.
Moved by Alman from the seventh, seconded by Alman from the ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city official.
With dispensal line items seven and eight, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We was, dispensal line items nine through ten, first reading board bills.
Board Bill One Seven Nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and honors recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor to submit the two thousand and sixteen annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the Federal Community Development Block Grant. Home appropriating the sum of sixteen million, six hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and four dollars, which the city estimates will be available for the two thousand and sixteen CDBG grant, CDBG program year, and appropriating the sum of two million, one hundred thousand dollars, which the city estimates will be available for the two thousand and sixteen home program year, appropriating the sum of one million, five hundred, four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which the city estimates will be available for the two thousand and sixteen ESG program year, and appropriating the sum of one million, four hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, which the city estimates will be available for the two thousand and sixteen HOPWA program year and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Housing Committee, Board Bill One Seven Nine. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill One Thirty, sponsored by Alderman Green and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight, sixty-five Humphrey and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Thirty-One, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-eight, oh-three through thirty-seven Dale and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Thirty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-two, thirteen through fifty-two, fifteen Bischoff and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Thirty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for nine through thirty through nine thirty-six North Kings Highway and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Forty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Moore and honors approving a redevelopment plan for the Greater Bill Scattered Sites. Board Bill One Forty-Four, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-one, nineteen Arsenal and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Four-Five, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-two, thirteen Arsenal and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Four-Six, sponsored by Alderman Conway and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-four, forty-eight Crittenden, containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Four-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Conway and an honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight, fifty-nine Flora Place and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Forty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Conway and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-three, forty-seven through fifty-three, forty-nine Wilson and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Four-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Conway and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty, twenty-eight Botanical and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Fifty, sponsored by Alderman Conway and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-nine, forty Shaw, containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Five-One, sponsored by Alderman Ingracian, Alderman Cotar, and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for the Tower Grove East Fox Park Scattered Sites, containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Five-Two, sponsored by Alderman Onewitz and honors approving a redevelopment plan for forty-nine and two Roberts. Board Bill One Five-Four, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and honors approving a redevelopment plan for fifty-two, fifteen Manchester. Board Bill One Five-Five, sponsored by Alderman Green and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-six, sixty-one Hartford and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Five-Six, sponsored by Alderman Green and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-six, sixty-two Humphrey and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Five-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Green and honors approving a redevelopment plan for forty-one, sixty-eight Juniata. Board Bill One Five-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifteen, oh-nine Fairmont and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Five-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Cotar and honors approving a redevelopment plan for seven hundred through oh-two Allen. Board Bill One Six-One, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-five, ten through twenty-six Pershing and containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee. Board Bill One Seven Four, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and honors recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Lease Agreement AL Two Oh Eight between the city and the state by the Office of Administration, Division of Facilities Management, Management, Design and Construction, containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill One Seven Five, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and honors recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Display Advertising Concession Agreement, AL Zero Two Three, between the city and Clear Channel Outdoor Incorporated, doing business at Clear Channel Airports, containing a severability and an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill One Twenty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis and honors approving a redevelopment plan for seventeen, oh-one Locust Street. Board Bill One Twenty-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Cotar and honors approving a redevelopment plan for four, oh-five Washington Avenue. Board Bill One, One Forty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-two, oh-one through thirty-two, oh-seven Cherokee, containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Five-Three, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-two, oh-one Cherokee and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One Six-Two, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard and honors approving a redevelopment plan for sixteen, oh-one through seventeen, twenty-three Delmar. Board Bill One Seven Two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and honors authorizing the execution of amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and between the city and TriStar Imports, containing a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill One Seven Three, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and honors pertaining to the regulation of the minimum wage, amending ordinance seven, zero, zero, seven, eight, pertaining to Section One, definitions containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensal line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill One Forty, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard and honors repealing ordinance seven, zero, zero, two, five, and in lieu thereof, enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package liquor license for any currently nonlicensed premises within the boundaries of the Fourteenth Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I move for, uh, approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alman from the ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. With dispensal line item sixteen through nineteen. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution One Twelve, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard. Whereas the St. Louis Board of Aldermen approves as follows. Number one, land clearance for the redevelopment authority of the City of St. Louis is authorized to file imminent domain proceedings in Circuit Court or take any other actions authorized by law against all of the particular parcels of land identified in Exhibit A to this resolution.
Alman from the fifth, you recognize on first reading of resolution number one twelve.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, move to have Resolution One Twelve sent to the HUD's committee.
It's been moved by Alman from the fifth, seconded by Alman from the fourteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution One Twelve to HUD's.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
This lane is unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
On Wednesday, September the thirtieth, Housing Committee meeting at ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room on Wednesday. Thursday, Public Safety Committee meeting, ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alman from the eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President. Let's see, uh, we will have a Ways and Means Committee meeting. Um, if you would put board bill, I think it's Antonio Francis, number sixty-seven, and then Alderwoman Davis has a board bill, um, that we'd like on, on the agenda for Tuesday morning at nine, eight a.m. The other thing is, next weekend will be the Historic Shaw Art Fair. Next Saturday and Sunday, we have the opportunity to bring ten or eleven thousand people into the city, see how beautiful it is, and, and enjoy the historical and architectural characteristics and details of the Shaw neighborhood that will be in combination with the best of Missouri marketplace at the Missouri Botanical Garden. So make plans to come and bring your Visa card. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Parks Committee is gonna be Thursday at one o'clock also.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President. I would like to remind everyone that Saturday is the celebration of Mackland Days at the corner of Devonshire and Mackland Avenues in the beautiful Southampton neighborhood. It kicks off with a progressive yard sale at eight a.m. and will go until eleven a.m. that night. It's a really nice street festival for the Southampton neighborhood, and all are invited. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alman from the twenty-fourth. Alman from the sixteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. On Sunday, the twenty-seventh, is Art in the Park, which is held in Francis Park. All funds raised from this event go back into Art in the Park.
All right, thank you. Alman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This weekend is the inaugural Q in the Lou BBQ Festival downtown St. Louis. We've got, uh, pit masters from all over the country in town building up some great barbecue. So come on out to, uh, Soldier Memorial Park this weekend, Friday night, Saturday and Sunday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further, Alman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, this Saturday morning, we have two nice events that are taking place. Uh, one is Walk for Curls. It's a walk to, um, benefit children getting human hair wigs made to fit them and not dealing with adults. Uh, so that'll be held in Forest Park, and you sign up at eight a.m., and it's over by the, um, what they call the Legend Field. And so that's the, the one by Hampton exit there. We also have Get Pumped Up, and that's gonna be held at Fallon Park, uh, in, um, by the YMCA there. It is being sponsored by Urban League, and it's a healthy initiative. So there'll be, they'll have a walk going on. You can get your blood pressure checked, a number of things, and get other resources about jobs and everything else. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alman from the fourteen.
Good morning again, Mr. President. I forgot, I neglected to mention that, uh, there will be a folk dance festival, Bosnian folk dancers, on, uh, Saturday, the twenty-fifth, at five o'clock at the Sebi Fountain at the intersection of Morgan Ford and Graboy. They will be, uh, dancers from all over the Midwest. They'll be there for about two hours, and then they're moving to the, uh, Grebich location. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alman from the second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that today you can get, uh, vaccinations for ten dollars between one-thirty and three-thirty at Charlotte Hall at eighty-seven oh-nine River View. And tomorrow you can have your pets spayed or neutered for ten dollars if they're at Charlotte Hall at eight a.m. And we'll also be doing a vaccination clinic tomorrow from one-thirty to three-thirty at eighty-seven oh-nine River View. It's the Pets in the Neighborhood event, and this is the last one I'm doing for the year. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Alman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I forgot to recognize St. Louis Finest. They'll have their, uh, bike ride tomorrow morning, and it'll be in Pine Line. It kicks off at the skating rink there. They normally have over two hundred, uh, motorcycle riders. And what they're doing is recognizing those that have fallen and also recognizing the service of the finest. They will cover all the territory and pass by each one of our policing districts, a lot of the firehouses. It goes through the city and the county as well. And I appreciate them for what they do, and as usual, I'll be there to send you off.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Also, the employee picnic is this year scheduled for October ninth. It is a great day. I know the employees, they really appreciate, uh, uh, having the opportunity to, um, to have lunch and sit and talk with members of the Board of Aldermen, and they really appreciate it when the Aldermen go out there and serve them. It's been a big hit across the years. Again, this, this year is October the ninth. Um, see Mary about, uh, if you're interested in being involved in this year's employee picnic, see Mary, uh, Collins in my office to get the particulars and also to find out, uh, what the contribution is this year. We also have, uh, you know, we, we have the positions that we're looking to fill. Uh, the last day for people to send in information, uh, to apply for the position is Wednesday, September thirtieth. We are going to hold a personnel meeting on October the first to begin to look at all the resumes. We've gotten good resumes in across all the positions, uh, like we've gotten for the legal assistance position. We've got over seventy-five applicants, twenty-five applicants for legal counsel, and thirteen applicants for financial analyst. So if you know anyone that would like to apply for those positions, it's gonna close again September thirtieth, and then the Personnel Committee, Personnel Committee will begin deliberating on those resumes and narrowing them down so that we can bring a, a list to the full board to be voted on. And if you're interested in being involved, you can also come to the Personnel Committee meeting. We would love to have people come to the Personnel Committee meeting who's interested in working through, looking at some of those applicants. Any further announcements, any further announcements? The, the, you know, we'll, we'll send it, but it'll be like ten a.m., but, um, we'll, we'll announce. Alman from the, Alman from the twenty-seventh, you recognize.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I need a motion, uh, to excuse the all the per, the all the people from the third, twelfth, eighteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-third.
Moved by Alman from the twenty-seventh, entertain a second on motion. Seconded by Alman from the eleventh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alman from the twenty-seventh, you recognize.
Yes, I move to adjourn.
Until?
Until, uh, October second, twenty-fifth. Until October second, twenty fifteen.
We can't let you off that easy. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the first, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, stand adjourned.